Okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for May 16, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hersberg.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
And Sam Kaufman.
Here. Okay, first thing is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on 5/13. The final agenda was posted in all three posting locations on 5/11 and 5/12, and the final agenda and packet were made available on 5/11.
Perfect, thank you. Next item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams?
Second.
Second by Gary Hersberg. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment, is there anybody here who would like to make any comments for any items on the agenda, off the agenda, or whatever they'd like to do?
We have Jerry Ashmore at 1114 South Street.
Hi, I'm Jerry Ashmore. I'm like the vast majority of Wanakee citizens. I live my life honestly. I don't harm anyone, I don't steal, I drive responsibly, and as a result of this, I have an expectation that the community accepts me for who I am, that I'm free to marry who I want, that I can live my life free of harassment as a single white male. You know, that's kind of my agenda, to live like that as a single white male, it's kind of given, it's automatic. Unfortunately for LGBTQ people who, as far as I'm aware, espouse the exact same agenda by word indeed, that's not necessarily so automatic, certainly hasn't been in the past. Because of this, I was very pleased last year when the village was willing to fly the pride flag and make the proclamation that was made last year in recognition of Pride Month. It's a very small gesture for the village, it sends out a message of inclusion rather than exclusion to everyone in the community. The flags are donated, so it costs a few minutes of someone's time to put them up. And so I urge you this year, once again, to pass the proclamation and to fly the pride flag in the month of June on municipal buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Ashmore at 114 South Street.
I wanted to speak on the pride flag and the proclamation too. I thought it was really a nice thing that the village did last year. I appreciated that it was an unanimous vote last year. It sends a message of welcome and inclusion, and it's, as somebody said last year at the meeting, it's just the right thing to do. So I'm just asking for you to do the same thing again this year. And another topic, real quick, is the Aquatics Center. I know that you've been struggling, and we'll be working on the referendum question tonight. The survey asked what we wanted, kind of like walking into a car dealership and like saying, hey, you want all the bells and whistles? And then you say, but hey, what's it gonna cost? And I think that's where you're at right now. I answered that, hey, I liked all those bells and whistles, but I would really look at just the outdoor facility at this point because it's pretty costly to go to the other one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Dennis Help at 214 K Drive.
Yes. I sent all of you a message and talked with some of you directly, and you responded. And I haven't really closely followed this pool deal, but I just had a few questions. We're having, we're looking to have a referendum in August. I was comparing it to the 2018, which is similar, where they had the primaries and then the general election, and only 35% of many people cast ballots in the primary. So I was wondering, you know, I was hoping that we could get more people involved. I know people are regret, or they're, they're, they vote in the general election where there's millions of votes, but then when it comes down to the local center, they don't, and I don't get that, they're wrong on that. But, but still, I was kind of hoping that we could have a election that's, that's attended by many. But I can see some points were made, some good points were made about the pool. It would be something where friends could gather, they wouldn't be segregated from a subdivision pool or something, and it might be a community thing, but I guess I lean against it, knowing what little I know. And I was kind of wondering whether there were other alternatives. I know this might get a chuckle, maybe subsidize trips to the delts or something, but I don't, I have no idea, I don't have the answers, but I'm just wondering, my big point was, I was hoping that we could, the most people involved is can, even though people are, what's the word, I'm missing the word, they're thoughtless on how, when they vote. They should vote in the main elections like this, certainly the presidential elections, but this is more valid to have a person vote than you're one in a million in the other ones, but, okay, that was my only point. And if I said something that people have already talked about all the time, I'm sorry, I didn't follow it, so, excuse me.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
No more comments.
Todd?
One I wanted to share, Keith, I don't know if you can get the camera over to the planter here, this is our piece for 2022 Art on Main. Again, big shout out to Enders Manufacturing, Enders Manufacturing Company Foundation, Springfield Welding, and the Chamber of Commerce and Crete Wanakee for collaborating to bring this program to Main Street. These are flower planters that we've, that we've put together, and as you can see, the bridge from Village Park is replicated on all the edges. There's, there's planter liners inside as well, so not only will these be beautified by 10 creative individuals in our village, the outside, they'll also be planted. So these will adorn the Chamber of Commerce grounds over the course of the summer and then be auctioned off at Oktoberfest.
Perfect, thank you. I should also acknowledge, I apologize, our village attorney is on speaker, so he is here, he's just not here, in body form. So, okay, thanks everybody. First item we have is a presentation. Okay, discuss and take, I looked up, I thought he was on your left, I was like, where'd he go? He was hiding back there, okay. Discuss, then take action on proclamation honoring former village trustee Bill Rannam. So the first thing I think we need is-
I make a motion, we approve the proclamation honoring Bill Rannam for his years of service to the village.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
This is your real, your actual bill.
Wow, thank you so much.
Okay, so, in proclamation of appreciation for Bill Rannam, whereas Bill Rannam, an active citizen of the community, has faithfully served the village of Wanakee as trustee from 2016 until 2022, and whereas Bill Rannam's contribution to municipal government is an indication of his pride in our community, particularly notable is his public service on the EMS Commission, Fire District Board, Police Committee, and Senior Services Committee. And whereas Bill Rannam's experience, leadership, integrity, and wisdom have earned him the respect and gratitude of the village of Wanakee, and whereas the village board, the employees of the village of Wanakee, and the residents of the village of Wanakee benefited tremendously from Bill Rannam's diligence, resourcefulness, and commitment. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village board of the village of Wanakee extends its sincere and heartfelt appreciation to Bill Rannam, and hereby commends him for his dedication and outstanding service to the village of Wanakee, and wishes him well in his future endeavors. Let this proclamation be entered into and made part of the permanent records of the village of Wanakee, and let this copy be presented to Bill Rannam, passed and adopted this second day of May 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Okay, Bill would like to share a few words of wisdom.
That was part of the deal.
Parting wisdom.
Give me the three minutes, start with three minutes. So this is just an airing of grievances? Beats of strength is later? Yeah. So Renee, for being too nice, she's always at the meeting, she's always the nicest one there. I appreciate that. Todd, for learning how to do Zoom, that didn't help me. I don't have my lawyer in the room, because one lawyer at a meeting is good, two lawyers is bad. Every time, there was two lawyers, it was horrible. That's how it goes. Carla, this is, I have nothing bad to say about you, but this is Julie back in the day, she wasn't sure I was gonna last, so this is the card she gave me.
Different former trustee, it's a different former trustee.
Yeah, Carla's perfect, she's gonna save everybody here. Nyla, help with my kids, they didn't grow up perfectly except for Carly. Gary and Phil work too hard, and Mercy wants to know where the LED lights are. And Phil keeps working harder than anybody else. Let's see, Sam for knowing what to do when he was seven, I don't know how he did it. Joe for reading the consent agenda, twice I think. And obviously Erin, always trying to outlate me, that's amazing. And she's here again, she did it again. And I appreciate Chris, even though in 20 years, he never said, you know, good defense or anything like that, playing old man basketball, he did talk me into this, and so I appreciate it, and I appreciate everything in the town, and everything was fantastic, so, thanks for all your help, thanks for everything. Appreciate it. So I'm just gonna make one comment, Bill, before you exit stage right, I guess, on that one. Thank you for your service, and Mercy, since you're trying to duck out that side, thank you. I know how much you have to give for your spouse in these situations, and thank you so much for that. So, appreciate it, Bill, and you're right, you never did play defense. All right. First item, it's always great to go from a proclamation happy thing to a public hearing, you never know what's gonna happen at a public hearing, but here we go. Discuss and take action to approve update to park impact fees. This one should be pretty easy. Sue, are you taking this one?
Renee can start, she does the math.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, so typically annually, we recalculate the math on how these park impact fees are calculated. So we look at the replacement costs for all the village-funded parks. So we exclude any developer-donated parks, we only focus on what it costs the village to build a park, and what those current replacement costs would be. And so I guess the biggest change in this year's calculation is that the North Ridge Park Shelter was completed. So in last year's calculation, we had an estimate, this year we had what the final costs were for completing that North Ridge Park Shelter. Otherwise, again, it's typically just sort of an inflationary increase that our insurance company attaches to all of our park assets. So we've done the new calculation, the numbers are in here, I think it went to the Parks Committee last week. And so, again, we do this annually to just refresh and make sure we're collecting the impact fees we need to in the village for future parks.
Okay. Sue, anything additional to you?
I don't know, it was at the Parks Committee, first meeting in May, and approved unanimously. Joe asked me a question earlier, and I'll just steal your thunder if you don't mind, Joe. When he looked at the report that is in your packet that details the amount of impact fees that we collect, it said it seems as though there were more houses built than impact fees collected, and that is the case. In some of our neighborhood situations, rather than the village collecting the impact fee and performing the improvements in the parks, we work with the local developer, and they develop those parks. So in those situations, the impact fees don't come into our fund, so that explains that situation.
Okay. Gary, any comments from Parks?
No, it was unanimous at the Parks Committee, and follow up to Sue, I think the developers, you know, we usually assume we get almost two to one based on, you know, what we'd be able to do in the parks, and that's why, that's why we've made those agreements in the past, because it's, you know, just a win-win for everyone, especially the neighbors that move in.
Can I just have a question? Just so I understand, so you said if there's maintenance or a new building that needs to go in, in a park that was not provided by a development project, so what happens down the road if there's a shelter that needs to be replaced in a park that was done by a developer?
Once the village takes ownership of the parks, then they become ours, and we care for them all equally through the sources that the board provides.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I just wanna thank Renee and Sue for being as thorough as they are in all of this, this is incredible info.
Do you have a motion?
We have to open our public hearing.
Yep. Oh yeah, we have to do our public hearing. Public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Where's Brian here to catch me on that?
No, he did.
Oh, he did. I didn't hear him. So I'm opening the public hearing, do we have any comments? Do we have any comments? Anybody?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know, we shouldn't allow the developers to develop their, let's make them pay the fee and then find out who we want to develop it. That's just an opinion, I know what Gary said, and that works, but, thought.
Okay. Any others? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. I guess, to your question, Dennis, the amounts we get from the developer are generally substantially more than what we could ever put into a park without having to borrow for it, so it's, they're, they're taking the park impact fee, and it's much, they're spending a lot more dollars than what we would normally on a park, and it's generally done more quickly too. The park gets created.
Right, that's the case, I mean.
So those are, those are the bases for why we have a developer that's doing that. So, I mean, that's just been the past practice for-
Two developers now have done that.
Two developers, and for how many years though? It's probably been-
Twenty.
At least 20 years that we've been, this practice has been happening, so.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, I mean, your comment there is, the benefit is to everybody in the community, because these parks get built before the homes get built in most cases. So everybody in the community, you know, gosh, think of Peaceful Valley Park, or Kilkenny Park, everybody in the community goes to those parks and uses them, and they were built, you know, prior to, if the village would've had to do that, and we took impact fees, we'd have waited, you know, 15 years to collect enough money to put a small playground in. Instead, the village can take advantage of that right up front, and it's great for the community.
An example of that is North Ridge, right? That's the last one that was done. How long has that subdivision been there, it just was finished?
Probably 15 years, Gary's probably spot on.
As opposed to right on, you know, pretty much when the houses are going into, first houses, that's when the parks are done by the developers, so that's, that's an advantage to the sub, to the whole community.
Did it close to me now? Well, you can give two different developers an opportunity there, you're closing out the opportunity to some other developer to make the park, and I understand what you're saying, but, that's just the point again.
Sure.
If you're right, that they can get it all cheaper and stuff, but I'm just-
Go ahead.
I assume, Sue, that the developers who do the park work closely with you to provide the amenities that the village needs, correct? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Clarification question. When those parks are, when it's determined that the developer is putting those parks in rather than paying this fee, that's part of the development agreement, correct?
Correct.
That's, okay.
Yep. Okay, any other comments, or is it look for a motion?
Well, I think I could make a motion, you know, surrounding communities are really happy with our parks. Our friends from Westport come in and use our pickleball courts like crazy, and they love them, so I make a motion, we approve the park impact fees as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, by Phil Williams, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I think it was Sam was first, so Sam Kaufman is the second. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Next we have, discuss and take action to adopt resolution recognizing June as LGBT Pride Month and to fly the pride flag at municipal buildings. Todd?
Yeah, I'll just report briefly that this item was included at the request of trustee Kaufman. One note, I did include in your packet our policy that the board established in 2021 to guide our decision-making on commemorative flag flying. This resolution is in compliance with that. I'll offer one clarification, if you'd like to include it in your motion, I noted in the packet that this is to be put into effect for the month of June 2022, to fly that flag, to fly the flag over municipal buildings. If you, for avoidance of doubt in the resolution, if you care to be very specific about that in the final now therefore, you may consider including 2022 after the word June in that clause, which just clarifies for avoidance of doubt that you're addressing it for this year, which, which would be in conformance with the policy. So, with that happy to answer questions, or perhaps Sam, Chris, perhaps Sam would want to share.
Comments, Sam?
Nothing really, it's identical to the resolution we passed last year, except for a byline that was removed that said the resolution needed to be displayed, I don't know why that was in there, but otherwise, it's the exact same.
Okay. Any others?
I have just a clarification question on the placement of the flags. It looks like there's three locations that they get flown at, since there's already three flags out here, and rotary will continue, I'm just looking for where does-
We put the Wisconsin flag below it, like the school does. On the middle pole, correct?
The pride flag goes below the Wisconsin or Wisconsin?
No, no, the US and Wisconsin flag go on the same pole.
Oh, okay.
For compliance with the flag.
And then at Village Center, Tree City?
Yeah, we put it with it.
Okay.
Worked last year.
It's all good.
Bill, Bill Frederick is our local flag expert and knows all the rules and specifics regarding what can and can't be done, and I guarantee, if he, if he at all, at all gets that just the wrong order, we hear about it really quick and we get it fixed right away, so, but he's, he's been on top of that and makes sure we are in compliance.
So I would, I would request that we do have the 2022 in there, only because I wanna read this every year, because I wanna draw more attention to it versus less attention, so by having it each year, we do that. So, so I'm gonna hopefully, that's, I'm gonna make the motion to include, as Todd recommended, the 2022, and each year, we continue to renew this as long as we possibly can, so, so I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion and a second? I will call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Great, so here's the resolution, everyone. Whereas President Barack Obama declared June LGBT Pride Month in 2010, stating, "I call upon all Americans to observe this month by fighting prejudice and discrimination in their own lives and everywhere it exists." Proclamation 8529 by US President Barack Obama, May 28, 2010. And whereas June has henceforth been designated as a time to celebrate our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ community with the express purpose of raising awareness of quality services and to foster a dialogue to promote healthy, safe, and prosperous climates and communities for all. And whereas in 1982, Wisconsin became the first state in the nation to pass a gay rights law, and whereas all Wanakee residents should be able to live and work in a safe and inclusive community free from discrimination, and civil rights laws contribute to such environments, and whereas the lack of awareness and understanding of issues facing LGBTQ individuals has contributed to higher rates of school dropout, harassment, and increased mental health challenges, and whereas education regarding LGBTQ issues increases understanding and cultivates respect for the LGBTQ community. And whereas policies that specifically mention sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression are associated with citizens feeling safer, decreased incidence of harassment related to sexual orientation, and a greater reporting of incidents. And whereas Village Ordinance Section 34-20 prohibits discrimination in housing in the village based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression among other characteristics, and whereas flying the rainbow flag throughout the month of June further symbolizes the village's celebrity of diversity and support for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community. Now therefore, it be resolved that the village board, I'm sorry, that the village of Wanakee recognizes the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and will fly the rainbow flag at Village Hall, Public Library, and Village Center during June to inspire equity, create alliances, celebrate diversity, and establish a safe environment in our community.
One quick edit, you didn't include the 2022 in your reading after the June and the now therefore.
He did in his motion.
Yeah, he did.
I did in my motion, but yes, that's, you're right, you're right, I didn't read it, so, thank you. Where would I have, at the end there?
The second, the second June and the now therefore clause, you could include 2022 afterwards.
Okay, included 2022 and the second June on the form. All right, we've got it. Thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on. Okay, discuss and take action on aquatics planning process, consider potential referendum questions.
Yeah, again, we'll work as a team here, several of us have been involved in the discussion, including the village attorney, in absorbing the information we gained from the village board at your prior meetings to put together potential questions for, for a future referendum. I believe there's five questions that we prepared for you, they've been vetted at the staff level, a few modifications have been made since our last discussion, and those are there for you to discuss. I included, for your reference, information on voting, voting participation rates in the different elections, I think that's relevant for you to consider as you're looking at participation, and the message delivered from the different referendums. Obviously, you can see of, of the key primary and the key general elections, August does present your lowest turnout of those, which is something to keep in mind if that, if that's a choice you make. We also included information about another alternative, if you cared to forego a referendum at this time, and would rather pursue further citizen input, we do have information on how to coordinate a scientific random sample survey, that would get you to the five, if not less, confident, points of confidence. We did get a proposal from River Falls, just for information, it sounds like a survey could be completed in how many weeks? Eight?
Twelve to fourteen.
Twelve to fourteen weeks. $10,400 is the total from UW River Falls to complete that survey. Sue, you did some research with another firm, have we heard back?
So Lead Research was the firm that we used when we surveyed the community about the Village Center years ago. I have talked with them several times, I do not have a final dollar amount from them. Their timeline was a little bit quicker than UW River Falls, six to eight weeks, but I do not have the dollar amount.
That gives you a general sense. Now, staff isn't, staff isn't recommending do a survey instead of a referendum, but we are suggesting though, if, if you're in a position where the village board is not at a point of consensus on the question of referendum, you may consider a survey as a tool to continue gauging citizen interest if we're not yet ready at that, for that referendum point. So that's, we're ready to address your further questions and gain direction from you on our next steps.
Anybody wanna start?
I will.
Go ahead, Nyla.
Okay, I've given so much thought about this, and I've gone around in circles, quite frankly, but where I'm at this point, I don't feel like I want to kick the can down the road without doing anything, so I'm thinking to put off doing the referendum until spring, and look at doing an outdoor pool project, and the reason I say that is as I talked to citizens who originally wanted, like, the whole enchilada, and when they started looking at the price and looking at community needs, et cetera, et cetera, some of them have said, you know, I really wanted a warm water area in a pool, but I realize now that it's going to be very expensive, and we need to do something for the, the young people, the children in the community, and it'll still be there for use by adults. And another thing that had been brought up at one point to me is the fact that some people, since they learned that we have a pool, a heated pool in Wanakee, some people have started using that facility, and they love it. So I don't know if we could do a partnership with that pool and have a class similar to how we work with the hockey rink, to do the figure skating, and to utilize what we have in town, but provide something more, without risking our budget. That is a huge concern to me. I don't want to be put in the position of, down the road, deciding what we have to give up because we put a pool in. I don't want to have to give up the quality of services we provide the citizens of Wanakee. I don't want to have to look at possibly cutting services at the community center, or our road reconstructions, or our emergency services, and, and when I heard the finance report, it really made me look at this very carefully, and, and that's what I'm- and that's what I'm thinking and, you know, you can go from there.
Thanks, Nyla, for leading off. Joe, I'm going to flip over to you, get your thoughts.
So one of the things that I've looked at is the previous community survey. And the piece that seems particularly missing from that, and maybe there's a place where it gets filled in, is the opinion of those who say I don't want a pool. The survey that's out there from 2021 says, you know, do you want indoor, do you want outdoor, do you want this size, do you want heated, whatever? But nowhere does it say, no, no, I don't think we should spend anything on this. So that's really where my mindset is, is we still need to get a more concrete answer to that question. That being said, I think putting something to the voters in August, while I would like to have that sort of turnaround, I would much rather have the kind of turnout that we have for November election to get a more concrete answer.
Gary?
I don't think doing a referendum question, especially in a single question, I don't think we can really get the information that we need. And I know Chris has always made that point. We really want the voters, you know? The last meeting I was saying, hey, let's just do an outdoor thing, you know? I had my mind kind of made up. And I look at this now and I, you know, concerns about voter turnout, you know, making this an August thing. I think maybe a survey, and I think the survey now that we could send out, it does a couple things. It also adds the cost associated with that question. Because before, hey, do you want outdoor, do you want indoor, what do you want? Without costs, it's hard for anybody to make that decision. I mean, to Joe's point, people say, I don't want one at all. I think a survey buys us some time, can clarify, clarify down to a single question what we really are going to do in the future. And I think it's the best approach for us to take at this time.
Okay, Sam?
I would support not doing it in August simply because of the location. But I hear from people out on the street, you know, they hear about the pool referendum. The first question they have for me is not necessarily the cost, it's where's it going to go? And I think if we do it without the location, that affects a lot of people's votes. So I think if we are more strategic and we're able to ask a single question that says exactly where it is and what we're doing and not, and do it, my preferred timing for it would be April of '23. I know that looks like it's kicking the can down the road, but, you know, I don't want to conflict with what the school is doing and what they're trying to say about tax impact and so forth. But I think we need the location. I think that's the key piece in addition to what people want with the cost figures that we've been presenting.
Phil?
Definitely, I think we have room in our borrowing that we can accomplish this without cutting into services and everything. I like the idea of the survey. I'd like us to, when we pose the question, say the village would like to build an aquatic facility at site so and so where it is. Would you prefer only an indoor, would indoor, outdoor, or an outdoor only, or neither facility? And let them weigh in on that. It's, I think we have, have to tell them where and give them the option of what or what not. There's definitely room, and we've got, we're going to have a lot of room in our borrowing at that point. And we'll be way under our limits, we'll be way under our limits by more than when we built the library. So it's, there's going to be a lot of room at that time. Thank you.
So I take quite a bit of gray in there, from what I've heard so far. I think that, I'll stay consistent with what I've said. I want the community to decide what this is going to be. And part of that is making sure the community has the time to be educated so they understand what this is all going to mean. The location isn't as important to me, but that's important to other voters. I mean, my statement was, I think we should put this in one of our parks, whether it's one of our existing parks or one of our future parks, because we can use that as part of our parkland dedication and we don't have that additional cost. So I think that's important. As far as indoor, outdoor, I mean, I've been supportive of the outdoor, but I just want to have the ability or capacity that we can expand it in the future if we want to to have an indoor type facility as part of it. What that means from a land perspective or a design perspective, I think that's what we probably have to adjust to right now. I think we need about six acres, is that correct, Sue?
Yep.
So if we're having it designed that way, we can probably fit both on the six acres, depending on what we designed for our outdoor feature right now. It may not work with what we've been given, but I think that's something that we should look at. From a cost perspective, that makes it more affordable. It gives us options for the future and gets this moving, at least to a point where people are going to make a decision. That's where I stand on this. I, the indoor, outdoor component, I think that'd be great. We'd be one of the very few select communities that have an indoor/outdoor option, with the Wisconsin Dells being probably the one that would be most relatable, but that's not a public pool. Those are private entities. So as far as August goes, I'm not in any hurry that we have to do this by August. I like actually that November, we're going to have a bigger election, we get a better result. More people will have an opportunity to vote. The spring elections are good, but they're not great. They're kind of the average ones. August is the minimal. November is going to be a largest amount. And you see that, whether it's a presidential election or a gubernatorial election, we have more people that vote for those, during those. So I'm in favor of, I don't want to spend any money, though. That's the thing, we did a survey, is our survey not a good survey of the community? So we're spending a scientific survey, what is that going to accomplish for us with that survey? That's more what I want to know. You know, six to eight weeks, fine. Is six to eight weeks going to get us done, that we can have our question ready for November? I don't know what the deadline date is for the November election, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I don't think it'll get to a point of knowing where the pool is going to go. But can, do you know the timing, when would it?
Seventy days prior to the November election is what we need to have the referendum question.
September 2nd. September 2nd.
No, I think it's August 30th.
September, sixty days, you said?
Seventy.
Seventy days.
Middle of August?
Yeah.
Yeah, second meeting in August, we'd have to...
Hey, Chris, I mean, to your comment, the one thing we do now know, that we didn't know when we gave those original surveys, was cost. So now people can see what the costs are, because that's what most people, a lot of people are concerned about. How is it going to impact me financially? So I think that's one positive thing. The other thing that it allows us to do, I mean, we've talked about, hey, what's this public-private partnership? Is, you know, we've had discussions with, you know, who knows? In the next four months, somebody could step up in Wanaquie and say, hey, I'm going to build, I'm going to build a health club in Wanaquie and it's going to have an indoor pool and it's going to be great. Well, that would change, but if that happens, that changes a lot of people's view of what they would support. Not saying that's going to happen, but that time may allow that.
I have a question too, for Sue. Sue, I mean, the, if, whatever pool we go with, it's not, it isn't defined in stone what amenities would be there and all that yet, is it? Because I've heard people say that they would, the four lap lanes, don't cut it. They said, you either, you have eight or you have none, is what I've been told. So, you know, I just want to make sure that that is not defined and that's, that would be something that we would be working on or somebody would be working on.
So you are correct, Nyla, the exact specifics of the pool that we might build has not been defined. I think we need to stay within the general parameters, the size of the facility, to be able to stay within our budget estimates. But there is definitely room and work to be done to talk about making some adjustments.
Okay, thank you.
So one other thing, and Sam, your comment was knowing where the pool was would be, that it's important in the question. My comment is, I don't think that's as important because if you put it in Rip Park, for example, that's on the very far west side of the community and people over on the east side of the community are going to say, I don't like that, and they will vote against it potentially. Or you put it on the north side over by Prairie Elementary upstairs somewhere, I don't know if we have, we had, that was one of the options we looked at. Same situation, now this southern half of the community is not going to be happy. Or we throw it out to the Hogan Road one, and that's the western side of the community. So I think it's difficult right now, I think it's almost better to say, we're going to have, if we want a community pool, people are going to come and use the community pool. Does it matter which park it's in or which location?
Yeah, because every location is on the edge of some part of town.
Correct, unless we have to purchase land. And if we're not trying to purchase land, then your other option is Village Park, right out of the Village Center, which is it going to be a hornet's nest, to talk about the fall diamond that's there and the historical nature of that park? So then you're going to have that issue. Outside of that spot, there's not really anything centralized. So my point, I guess, is the location may get some votes from some people, but lose votes from others. And so I don't know if that's as important to me. I think what we're going to have there and the dollars it's going to cost, and if people want to have a pool for themselves, or if they say we want this because this is going to be a betterment of our community for the health and wellness of all of our citizens and potentially those that come in. So that, that's really where I look at this, is, but the community needs to decide that. And they, by knowing the dollar amount and knowing, to your point, Nyla, what you just asked Sue, what it's going to be in the Aquatic Center, that's what they want to know, pure and simple. I've heard some stories and, you know, so my only, my biggest hesitancy with doing a pool, frankly, is lifeguards. I hear this lifeguard problem that sits out there and it's very difficult, the timing, how much you have to pay for lifeguards. That's the only question mark I could really have within this. So that's an operational thing. And you could say, well, it's an operational cost, but if you can't get lifeguards and you can't open the facility, then you spent money on a facility that you can't open, that's not really very good either.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think the operational costs are something that we may want to put into...
And I think that has to be in there.
It's in there.
It's baked in, Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're absolutely right.
But I think we need to make that obvious in whatever we put forward.
Yes.
Not just as a long question.
I swim like a rock.
So I think, as Gary and Nyla that said, go round and round, we could go round and round on this as a board forever. And I don't think that's what our citizens want either. They want to know answers, or they want to have something to vote on. And to your point, Joe, the people that want to vote, no, haven't had an opportunity yet. I commend Dennis for his comment earlier about, he knows no right now, but he doesn't really know what it is. So that's the part that I've been emphasizing, is people get educated as we go through this process. August, people won't have a chance to get educated fast enough. I just don't believe they would. So I think my personal opinion is, how much did we spend on the other survey we did? Roughly the same?
That was...
It was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
No, 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 the one we just did, that we have.
Oh, that we did on our own.
Did that cost us really much?
It did not. The difference, I think, between Lead and UW River Falls is that they can help us manage that survey so it's truly random and truly represents the thoughts of the entire village, rather than just people who aren't interested. So there's a little bit better validity to the results if we have a professional firm help us.
Okay, one question to that. So with that, you have people who'll say, well, you can get a survey, say whatever you want it to say. That you can manipulate the questions to get the answers or elicit the responses that you're looking for. How do they handle that? Are we making the questions or are they making the questions? And are we giving them guidance?
So the village board will approve the questions and they will help us create them.
Okay, so they would be bringing the questions, we would be approving them, that would be a very public thing so people would hear us doing those, so we're not, we're not creating those. I, I just, there's always conspiracies out there and, you know, that we're trying to manipulate this or manipulate that. And I don't, I don't want that to be the case in this. I want it to be, here's, we're trying to do what people have asked us to do. And just like any other thing, if people ask and we put it forward to the community to get the answers, that's where our goal is. So...
I wanted to offer one clarification about the survey we did as part of this, of the recent study. The, we intentionally didn't ask the question, no, we didn't ask with the option, don't do a pool at all, because that's not what we were charged with assembling for the village board. It was to evaluate the types of the facilities if we did one. And that, that's what we gained from that survey, helped us and helped George, our consultant, in designing what you sought to then cost out what those options would cost. So I just wanted to be clear that we, that it was intentionally not, not asked with the no pool option.
Because we always knew that a referendum was coming.
Right.
Correct.
To give all of the village the opportunity to say yes or no.
Which is why I've been saying, please educate yourself before you say no. It's okay to say no, that's fine, but educate yourself on what the advantage, disadvantage to the community and people in general are going to be.
So my question is, I mean, I'd like to make a motion right now and allow staff to choose either River Falls or Lead Research to do this study. Is there any importance that we get it back and trying to make, you know, by November? Do we want to somehow get a referendum question on the November ballot somehow?
So here's how I see that. So they're six to eight weeks, so where does eight weeks take us to?
Middle of August, right?
Yeah.
From here, we're in May, June, and July.
That puts you at the 11th, the, probably the 18th meeting. Yeah, is that a village board meeting, 18th of July, that board meeting?
So we'll be back for 18th of July. So then we would be deciding for the question in August, be ready for the referendum question. We'd have August, September, and October to educate the population to what our decisions have been made. Is that a feasible timeframe from what you guys feel as staff?
My, that timeline was just an estimate in a conversation I had with them last week. So we're going to have to circle back to make sure Lead can truly meet those.
So that, to me, is if they can meet that, that, I think that works for me. I don't know what you guys, do you have it?
But if we go with UW River Falls, they are not going to meet that timeline and we have not seen a cost. I just want to caution you that I cannot guarantee you that we can meet that August deadline. We don't know that.
And do you feel, do you feel comfortable with either one of those options? I mean, they're...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that survey going to get us data that we don't have or that we wouldn't be asking in November anyway?
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
Depends on the questions.
Yeah.
But as long as we can ask one question, a referendum question.
I would say, generally speaking, a well-done scientific random sample survey should give you greater confidence in that the results represent the entirety of the community. A referendum gives you the results of people who chose to vote. So that, that's different. I'm not saying one is right or wrong, but there is a level of confidence difference that's worth considering.
Because my concern, if we go to November and say, okay, we're going to ask a question, we need to ask one question. And asking one question, we're not going to get the answers we're looking for. That's why I think the survey can ask multiple questions, drill down to where we need to be, and then we can ask, based on that, we can ask a single question.
When?
And it may be April. If we can't make November, hey, we can't make it, it's got to go to April and that's where Sam wanted it to go anyway.
And I don't want to overwhelm it with the school either.
Yeah.
Because you know, in 2014, it was moving the intermediate. This time, it's potentially moving heritage out of the downtown, which is a very emotional and touchy subject for a lot of people that will probably get more attention from the public than the referendum last time. And we may be competing with them for attention and they may just go to the wayside with it.
I feel like it would just be rushed if we try to get it on a November referendum.
With the survey?
Mm-hmm. I mean, it, we need time to educate the public and we need time to get the questions together and to put a referendum, or to put the survey together, get it out to the population and write a referendum question. I, I think we'd be asking a lot of staff to get this moving and get it done that fast. I would, I would love it if it was possible, but, and again, I don't want to necessarily have a referendum question on the ballot pertaining to a public pool when we have, we're going, we know there's going to be one for the school.
So Todd and I met with Randy Hudenberg specifically about this topic and his response was, they act, they're independent of one another and they should have spent on their own. So, Todd and I met with Randy Gutenberg specifically about this topic, and, and his response was, they act, they're independent of one another and they should have spent on their own. That's, that's the school side of it, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it's right now, I'm just saying that's what the school district's side of it is. Because I was concerned about the same thing you were concerned about. So, I, I'm of the opinion that we try to, um, put something forward in that, I don't know that we need to do a survey. I think if we do a outdoor option with the ability to expand and ed- start educating, have that ready to go, start educating, it can be ready by November. We have plenty of time to educate if we know we're gonna do that route. We know what the cost is, we know what we're gonna need to do. If we're, if we're still focused on, we gotta have indoor/outdoor or outdoor-only, then, then yeah, then we should go through this whole survey process. But I think if, from a cost perspective, what I can support, I know is outdoor for sure. And if we have the capabilities to expand, is there a reason for us to spend more money to find out what we're probably gonna? I mean, I don't know what else we'd find out with that, as you're kind of pointing out, Joe. So, if you guys are comfortable with that route, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there as a, Sue, is that a, is that a?
So I have George on my phone and I'm asking him what kind of work it would take to revisit our plans to make them truly feasible. Because at, if you look at all of the materials that are on the village's website that show the different plans, the way they have been designed, they are not. They have, the outdoor portion is designed one way for the outdoor-only pool, and it is substantially different in the indoor/outdoor version. And so, um, asking him if there would need to be some work done to be able to truly put forth a proposal that is feasible.
I mean, my, my comment to that is, in looking at the different proposals, we could still just do the outdoor proposal, as long as we have enough space.
For sure.
That's really what this comes down to, is how much land we need if we're gonna have an indoor option with it. Not necessarily to change the design of what we have in the outdoor, but that we have the space.
I, I'll ask my question.
So would we need an extra acre? Probably, that's probably what it would be, is my guess. And then the placement of the pool, where it is gonna be on the property, whichever one we go into. I, I mean, that seems like what it would work, how it would work, but. Thoughts? So I threw something out at you guys and maybe I just went down the wrong path and that's fine. But that seems to make the most sense to me, based on our last conversation where we were kind of split. I just want to make sure we have the ability to expand, if we do the outdoor only.
That, that's perfectly reasonable, uh, but if you decide to later do the indoor/outdoor, the difference isn't gonna be the difference between nine million and fifteen million, it's gonna be the difference between nine million and twenty million. Because you're not gonna be able to just add this on right next to there. A lot of this save, cost is having the site work all done at the same time and et cetera. So, I don't think.
I, I agree.
You've got, it's gonna be quite expensive to go back and fit an indoor/outdoor in after you've already got the in, outdoor-only there. Just my personal opinion. I think I've seen some nods.
I agree, anytime you wait to do anything, it gets more expensive. But, working within our current budget, it makes the most sense to do it that way, right now.
Easy.
That's, that's all.
I'm not gonna fight it.
I agree with Chris, I mean, I, I just don't want to overextend our, and Phil may very well be right that we would, you know, come in okay, like we did with the, um, village center. But I guess I've always been, um, more, very budget-minded and, and always knowing I'm going to be able to meet the budget rather than having questions, because I don't, I'm not comfortable with spending other people's money with questions.
So I'll even complicate it further. I, I, I'm all for going for the outdoor option, we don't know where it's gonna be, one of the parks, but I'd also like to say, let's put a spray pad in. And I'd like to put the spray pad on the north side of the community, because we have a lot of private pools in the other sections, and I'd like to put a spray pad in somewhere. So we could add that in a different area at a relatively small cost comparatively to putting in pools. And safer, and we don't need lifeguards as part of that. So, that, that's the other thing I'd like to consider, I'm with this. I think it's, Phil, you know, because you've done research on the spray pads.
I think we've got a lot of research on spray, spray pads, right, yet? It's a couple of years old?
Not that I'm saying we have to put one with the other, we don't have to do that, but I think that's a great thing for the community, it spreads it out a little bit too. So. All right, you guys are silent.
But, there is, there is an argument to having both side by side, so if you got a kid that's spray pad and a kid that's pool, and then you, now you're gonna be, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I look at, I look at Middleton, Middleton's got their spray pad in a totally different park than where they've got their community pool.
Total different area.
They're kind of different people that are using them too.
Yep.
I just saw the other days when we had the ninety-plus degrees, that would have been nice to have a spray pad for the kids to go to, you don't have anything, so.
So I'm not sure where we're at, really.
So. So I just threw an option out there, doesn't mean we have to do that, if anybody has different opinions and stuff, please put it forward.
Can we, can we get it down to the point, is August, November, April, any one of those, I mean, from a voting standpoint, we all want the best turnout we can get. I'm not sure.
April is half of November at best.
I know, that's the problem with it.
But it might be higher next year too, because of the potential for the state Supreme Court conflict. It's gonna get a lot of national attention and outside money.
But, I mean, it might be, but it's, it's, at, at best, it's forty percent.
Right, I mean, history-wise, I'll tell you, November is, November's you're gonna get the best turnout.
But it might be better, you know, but, you know, if you get people charged, you could get eighty percent, I doubt it, but eighty percent's a charged presidential election.
The other part of it is, and whether, you guys can agree or disagree with this, but the school district is gonna have their vote in November. If it's a no at the school board, they're probably gonna have another referendum in.
That's true.
April.
April. If it's a no in April, they're probably gonna have another election in November.
That's true.
So, that's just the nature of schools and how, how they work with this. Ours is gonna be, that's right, and I think that's what Randy was trying to get at with me, is that we're gonna be standing independently from them, um, for what people want. So people are gonna either say yes or no, just like they are with the school referendum. So I'm, I'm not as concerned about the November, after talking to them and rationalizing it out.
I just think for the best turnout of the community, I think that date is probably important, just because, I mean, that's what we're all trying to get here, is to make sure everybody gets a voice. Well, if you got thirty-five percent of the people showing up, or you got, you know, sixty or seventy, I think November makes a lot more sense.
I agree. So let me take this in chunks. One, are people comfortable with putting this to referendum in November? Nyla?
Okay, yep.
Gary?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Dan? Okay, so we're comfortable with November. So then we need to take and look and say, do we, if we, by saying we're going in November, we basically just said we're not gonna do another community survey, scientific, because we don't have the time to do that, okay? So then it takes us to, okay, do we want to have one of the questions that staff has proposed of these five? Or do we want to decide, let's do the outdoor option with the ability to expand, I'm hoping that, that's what I, where I want in there, for the future? Or do you want indoor/outdoor option right off the bat? That's kind of where we're, where we're at. So, we decided November, so now we need to either go with one of these questions for November, because what's great about right now, if we make this decision, is we have five months to educate the community on what we're gonna be doing and what they're gonna be, being asked with this.
Again, my concern, trying to ask a question in November, is you have to ask one. And I don't think that one question's gonna tell us anything.
I think it will, because it's either they want it or they don't.
Which one do they want?
What we're asking them is a specific question, I think it would be better than asking two or three questions and confusing somebody.
So, that goes back to what I'm getting at, do we want to have the options right now for indoor/outdoor? Or do we want an outdoor option right now with ability to expand?
I would, I would support outdoor with ability to expand.
Okay, Gary?
If I had to choose, that's what I would support.
Phil?
I'd give up.
You'd give up?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, I think it's silly, but I'd go in with it. I think, I think you, you've got the room, you do it right now. But, but it, yeah, but I'm, I'm on the vote.
That's fine.
First, say the way I.
I, I hear where you're at, Joe?
I think ability to expand is fine.
Dan?
I'd support your proposal.
Okay, so that's, that's, we know where I'm at with it, so.
Do it.
You can live with it?
Sure.
Okay. So then, what we're, what we're looking at then is a November referendum to the community that we're gonna offer up an option of outdoor only with the ability to expand. Location, I made my comments about location. We're not probably gonna know our location by then. It's just not, we're, we're not gonna know it at that point. So.
Yeah, and I think in the case of my neighborhood, it was more, we just don't want it out by industry on Hogan Road, but anywhere else you put it, fine. That was their take.
Okay.
That was more what it was, not just the location necessarily specific, we just don't want it at one of them.
Okay, so, so location, we'll be okay with it, as, and again, that's just gonna be us educating the population on, we're gonna have it in a park. We just don't know which one at this point, I'm within it. We have to look at all, all the utilities and all the different aspects of what we can do and what we can't do. I know that's been an issue with some of the locations from what I remember. So, all right, so, I think we're just about here. We don't have to have the question done today either.
That's correct.
So, we've gone to the direction of, we're going to November referendum, we're going to have an outdoor option with the ability to expand. And we're gonna do a great job of educating the population. And probably in the next couple of meetings, you'll be bringing forth all kinds of wonderful, exciting ideas on how we're gonna educate the population through sessions, mailers, social media, all of that stuff. Yes?
That's, that's what we'll do, we'll definitely want to firm up the, firm up the question, um, that would probably be the next, uh, the next thing to bring to you. And the sooner we can get confidence from you on that, then we start to design our marketing materials really well. Oh, Brian, did you want to jump in?
Yeah.
All right, hold on a sec, hold on a second. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Hold on a sec, hold on a second, let me, let me switch to, um, speakers. Go ahead.
So when you look at the five questions that are in your packet now, um, especially if you're focusing on, it sounds to me like it's gonna be, the question's gonna be related to an outdoor public aquatic facility with the ability to expand. The next question is, you know, do you prefer the, the question one that is more generic? Or with the new question that staff is gonna get, bring back to you, do you also want to see it set up like question four, where there's information in there regarding cost?
So, my, my opinion to Brian's comment is number one is fine, as long as we educate the population beforehand. They should know what the costs are, we don't need to have that in the question. It's just, one is gonna be it, should the village pursue the construction of outdoor public aquatics facility? I mean, you could end it with, at the cost of.
Yeah, we could end it with that, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's essentially what question four is already doing with the cost.
Yeah.
Just a little more complicated.
Lot more words.
Yeah, a lot more words.
Well, I mean.
Well, what we can do at, at.
So we don't need to decide this one tonight, is what I was saying. So this is, I, I think, you guys are all in agreement, one is, is okay with, you know, at a cost of. Four, I, I could live with if they modify it to be not so wordy.
Yeah.
So we're gonna narrow down your debate then with fewer questions, surveys out of the question, and, uh, have at a future meeting for you discussion on that topic.
Yes.
More direct question.
And as part of the education process, we'll also be discussing Nyla's question to Sue about what it's gonna look like, the pool. So we can get that out to the community at some point with all fun diagrams and excitement. Coming up, coming up. From George. We know what we're gonna get for.
I don't even know what to say.
That's how we all were at the beginning of this conversation, we all.
We, we saw conceptual design for outdoor only.
Correct.
In his presentation, and from his costs.
And that has eight, oh, that has eight lap lengths, so I think we're good.
Good.
He hasn't designed it with the notion of adding on or modifying in the future, which we can work on, right?
But I think what Chris clarified was, the, the question is actually about building the outdoor pool as shown. Just making sure that our location is large enough, that in the future, if we wanted to also have an indoor pool, it could happen on the same site. That, am I, is that correct?
That's what I was asking, yes.
Then I think we're good with Nyla's question about lack of lap lengths. Because we have eight, no, six.
I don't, I don't remember.
But it's more than four, yeah, so I think we're good.
But what I'm saying is if it's six, someone specifically said it has to be eight for competition.
And so we're not gonna redesign for the referendum, because that will take consultant time, energy, and money. We're gonna stick with the concept, knowing that it can be adjusted a bit.
And last, if you would mind to ask George this, I'm sure the answer already, but I want to protect the seniors, the seniors were very clear to me that they want warm water pool. So if there's a way to have this be warm water.
The outdoor pool has two vessels, and so the temperature control can vary from one vessel to the next.
Perfect.
Outdoor pools are not generally as warm as indoor pools, but there are two vessels and they can be controlled separately.
So if we have like ten straight days of ninety degrees, I'm sure that's gonna be a pretty warm pool regardless.
Yes.
So, okay.
So to help us as staff pulling together your next discussion, I, I heard several of you sort of, um, touch on the notion of a splash spray pad as a component, yeah, right. Is that part of what we're talking about, or Sue, does the design that we saw from George even incorporate any, any elements of spray and splash?
It does have some of those amenities, it's not a true standalone splash park where there's no standing water.
But there's zero depth, zero depth type.
Absolutely.
Features in that. So what direction do you wanna, do you want staff to take in considering any other, uh, facilities related to splash?
So I'm gonna just retract the whole splash pad thing, and here's why, I don't want to complicate it.
Right, we don't want to confuse.
And that's, that's something I think from, I know the Rotary's interested in helping out doing a splash pad, correct? Still, is that still the case, Phil?
We could, we could still, we got money left by then.
So, so there, there's options.
We gotta do the dog part first.
Understood, there's options, all I'm saying is there's options for, for the spray pad, because it's not, it's not as significant a budgetary item as, as the pool is. So, I'm, I'm retracting that part of it, out of it, if you guys are okay with that, for right now. Yes.
And I think versus the referendum, a splash park is a, a money-raising opportunity for groups to get involved with, and, you know, we could cover that. Like Phil would say, probably fair, a little straightforward.
Yes. Okay. Guidance enough?
Yes.
Anybody from the crowd like to address us on this? That's something we missed, or something that we're not taking into account, it's here tonight. And for those with masks, you don't have to take your mask down to talk, it's okay. If you have any, no?
The word was apathy before, voters have apathy, and maybe that, and that's certainly their own fault, but.
Okay.
Like them on my side in a November vote.
Fair enough, fair enough, I think that's right. Okay, are we good?
Do we need an actual motion?
I don't, do we, I don't think we, we just were giving staff direction on this one tonight. And then the future will have back what our question's gonna be, that's really what we need to do, and then get moving around the education of the community. Okay, everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys, this was a good, healthy discussion, so. All right.
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, and I'm Dr. Random tonight, right there. You have a motion?
Second.
On a second. Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, thanks everyone.